I am calling meeting to order. Supervisor Diamond, you'll need to deliver an invocation for us, please.
Sure. Lord, we thank you for the privilege of being here in this country where we can worship freely. We ask that you give us wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of real people in this county and in this country. We ask that you go and protect those who need your protection, give hope to those that need your hope. But most of all, Laura, we just ask that we really, truly seek wisdom in what we do and those that receive that also receive wisdom. In Christ, then we pray. Amen.
Amen. Vice Chairman Lofton, you'll leave us in the pledge, please.
Would you stand and face the flag and join me with the pledge?
I'll go ahead. It's a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Option of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
Well, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Chairman, we staff received a request from a representative of the applicant for the Brewstown Comp Plan Amendment to postpone consideration of that item.
All right, we have a request to remove that item from our agenda. How would the board like to handle the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to have the item removed.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, to adopt the agenda as amended with CPPA 0218 removed. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? amended the agenda is adopted. Bring us to the period of the meeting we reserved for citizen comments on agenda items that are not subject to a public hearing. I'm going to, we have, I know some folks from, that wanted to speak to the CPPA 0218 issue and have signed up for that. I'm going to allow you, so if you would call the first one.
Mr. Arthur Bragg.
Mr. Bragg, if you'd give us your name, Magisterial District, then limit your comments to three minutes or less, please, sir.
My name is Arthur Bragg, and I'm from the Stonewall District. And Mr. Chairman and Board members, I'd like, I and my neighbors are against amendment to change the land use from a farm to a industrial area so near to the Brewstown community. Those here, I'd like for them to stand that are in denial of this request. Thank you very much. And for years, the quarry has been the limit of industrial-type uses and traffic in Clearbrook. There are many pieces of land west of the quarry along Route 11 and Interstate 81 Carter that is either zoned or planned to be industrial uses. Brewstown Road is in bad shape due to the quarry. The traffic light at Route 11 backs up sometimes clear to the fire department. I'm against adding any more traffic, truck traffic to this area, as well as all my friends. The quarry has over 70,000 trucks a year in and out that road. Now, this proposal from Clorox will create 3,600, no, excuse me, 36,500 cars and 86,400 trucks per year. There is no need to change the land use in this area, especially since there are 128 acres of vacant land for the sale next to this farm, for sale in it is already zoned EM. The only reason to amend this plan is so some company can buy cheaper land at expense of the Brewstown community. I will present a petition of over 150 signatures against this proposal and the overload of the Brewstown Road. I could have gotten many more. I had no one that was in favor of the plan. It will cheapen their property, and maybe the Commonwealth of Revenue will ask for a reduction in their taxes. I bet she will. Traffic can bear, traffic can't bear even today's amount. The road is badly deteriorated. VDOT comes and looks at it and does nothing. I have tractor and trailers coming through the village. I have large transit tourist buses. I have Dollar General tractor and trailers, Jack and Jill tractor and trailers, and large car haulers. So where are they going through the village east of Brewstown? The governor even mentions room for expansion, which we don't even need based on what he has presented. Carmus should have a road from the facility directly to Route 11, which would alleviate a lot of problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.[349.03][349.03][applause] It's not a pep rally, folks, please. Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Gardner?
My name's Charlie Gardner, I'm in the Stonewall District. I, as well as Arthur Bragg, gentlemen here and ladies on the board oppose this amendment. Like Arthur has spoken, not only just the traffic that at this point in time right now, as horrendous as it is, most of us have houses that are right close to the road. There's nothing more of a joyful feeling than have a tractor-trailer coming through there, jake breaking, shaking your house. Watch cops come through there all day long, don't do a daggone thing about it. They speed, they fly. They're all going back, an old one-lane bridge that sooner or later, that bridge is going to give way. But going back to this here, we don't have the electrical infrastructure. You don't have the roads. No matter how they keep trying to do it where they want to reroute Brewstown Road, you're going to end up putting a street light back out of where this property is. So we're going to have a street light on a county road. Where's the water going to come from? Y'all can't hardly find the water you need right now for the houses that you put in. Where's this water going to come from? And once again, who's going to pay for this? Everybody sitting in this room, everybody in Frederick County is going to pay for this. The highway, the electrical infrastructure. Whose taxes are going to go up because now supposedly our property is going to be worth more? It's this type of stuff that I don't think anybody is putting any type of diligence into thoughts or the process to sit here and consider. Anybody in these communities that have to suffer just so a few can proffer. And I really think that everybody really needs to stand up and do the right thing instead of sitting here constantly enlarging everything, putting more houses in, putting more facilities in. 200 jobs this thing may create. Gentlemen, we're living in a country right now that the economic is the lowest unemployment rate we've had since who goes when. We can't find enough people to work the jobs that are open right now. So what's this 200 jobs going to do? What are they going to pay them, 13, 14 bucks an hour in a county that the median home is $250,000? Tell me how that's going to help anybody out. And like I said, in the long run, who's going to suffer? The residents. The people who live back there, that have to put up with the traffic, the noise, the pollution. It's bad enough we listen to the quarry 24/7 from their mill all night long. And now we're going to have 24-hour traffic. Not cars, tractor-trailers, all hours of the night. I really think somebody needs to really think hard about this decision and do something right for the people. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Phillips?
Ken Berchem.
I'm Kenneth Berchem. I live on Sir John's Road. I'm in Clearbrook.
I'm sorry, pick that microphone.
Okay.
You'll have to really push it up there. It doesn't like to stay up.
Push it further than it's supposed to.
There you go, well done, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Kenneth Berchem, I'm on Sir John's Road in Stonewall District. I've got a couple of things that I'd like to know more about, and that's what I was here for. The traffic light at the Route 11, the road is breaking away, just caving in, and it's always got real low spots, soft spots. And I used to drive a truck, and I know what it takes. And there is no good place for heavy trucks there at the traffic light leaving. Also, the traffic is backed up so bad there at times, like Mr. Major said, it's backed up to the fire company, and it's a long wait there to get out into Route 11. I want to know how much waste and pollutants are going to be left from this, if this place comes into town. I've been, drove truck for years, and I know over at Frederick then, when they had the Clorox plant there, it polluted all the grounds around there. Now I've got a well. I don't want to have to have water run all the way out there to where I live for that. The pollutants and also air or else on the ground, anything that might come out of that and, you know, destroy the habit of living there, we have to move somewhere else, I guess, to get away from it. And I'd like to know where their waste is going, anything from what they are making, manufacturing, where will they take the waste? Is it going to go to a landfill, or is there a place there for it to go, you know? So that's right to present time, that's all I have to ask. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Phillips?
Brenda Fristo. Hello. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Brenda Fristo. I'm with the Stonewall District, and I am a resident of Brewstown Road. First, I want to thank you for serving our community. And with respect to Brewstown Road and the area amendment, I request that you vote no if this measure comes up to this draft amendment. Please do not add manufacturing to mining in our community. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan was adopted after much time, energy, thought, and input from the citizens, from Frederick County Government, and from the board. According to the plan, I quote, "It strives to further this great community." Further, the plan states that it is guided by the vision statement and core values adopted by you, the Board of Supervisors. The vision statement reads, "Ensuring the quality of life of all Frederick County citizens by preserving the past and planning for the future through sound fiscal management." And the fiscal impact statement of this will tell you that this is not a good fiscal decision as well. One of several core values reads that you want to be a government concerned with long-range planning that protects our rural heritage and directs its future growth through planned infrastructure. The plan has laid out areas that are designated already for manufacturing. This tract of land is not one of them. I attended last week's Planning Commission meeting, and our representative, Mr. Klein, who is very familiar with our community, read several reasons why this should not happen. He asked that it not go forward. His reasons were much like those all of us here tonight are stating. Our beautiful Clearbrook Park is already being overshadowed by the new Clearbrook volcano. This is from the quarry. It's being built by Carmus right now. Nothing can be done about this. I've got the documents on that. That was done a long time ago. But something can be done about further destruction of our community. So I am asking you to stop this destruction of our community by voting no. Say no to manufacturing activity in our beautiful little community. Here are some reasons why. To honor the thought that approved, that you had when you approved the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, for the health and well-being of the citizens in your county, to give citizens and visitors of Clearbrook Park and the pool a better environment. Currently, Carmus operates around the clock. We have dust blasting, huge dump truck traffic, 24/7 noise, all-night lighting from the extensive existing mining plant. Adding manufacturing to mining will be damaging to our environment and the safety and well-being of your citizens. I have asked myself, how many buildings will Clorox want to build? How high will the Clorox buildings be? What type of emissions will flow out into the air from the smokestacks? We do not want to see even one more speck of dust in our environment. We do not want to see even one more huge dump truck clogging up our road. I've seen the dump trucks backed up so far on Brewstown Road that the fire department could not respond to a fire if needed. They are past the park entrance. I implore you for the sake of your citizens and the air being breathed by children attending Stonewall Elementary School and the school that you're going to build, the Jordan Springs Elementary School. I implore you to say no to Clorox. Do not succumb to the pressure from the governor's office, who has already announced this as if it's a done deal. So say yes to your citizens instead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Folks?
Mr. McFarland?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. My name is Greg McFarland. I'm with the Stonewall District. I reiterate most of the things that the people have already said today, so I'm going to go a little bit different. I grew up around here, lived here most of my life, moved to Richmond for 15 years, ran a business. Moved back here so I could have peace and quiet and retire where I grew up. Well, built a home, 14 acres. Brewstown, it was quiet for the first two years until Carmus started building their new plant and 24/7. All you hear is explosions, dump trucks, traffic. It's gotten crazy. The new plant, all that will do is exacerbate the existing problem. You'll not only have that, you'll have Carmus in here in about three years saying, hey, listen, we'd like to have another stack, we want to expand because we can't keep up with the demand for our product because Clorox will be buying some of it. Then we'll have an exacerbated problem that we can't get rid of. We need to stop the expansion now. There's plenty of places around Frederick County that is already designed for industrial use, that has the infrastructure already in place. We have no employment. Amazon can't find the people that they need. FBI building is coming out. No one can find employees. I can't find employees, they're not going to find employees. So what are we going to do? We're going to put a plant in there that nobody can find employees for. Why do we need it here? Why do we need it now? All, everybody going, well, it's going to help the tax burden. No, it wasn't. It never does. All it does is exacerbate other problems. You'll sit there and you'll bring in somebody like an Amazon, or you'll bring in somebody like a Hood, because I remember the conversation when Hood came in. This is going to help the tax liability for everybody. Taxes will go down because Hood will bring in so much money. You always chase that dream, but it never happens. All that happens is, we'll need another school. Taxes will have to go up to pay for that school. How many schools do we have now that we've, in the last 25 years? When I was here, there was one. Now there's four county schools, probably going to be another. Elementary schools is popping up. We don't need the additional workforce there. We have no place to put them. Proctor and Gamble is siphoning people out of Virginia. Amazon can't find anyone. They've changed all their standards to get people to just even show up. We do not need another plant in that area, let alone the traffic that all these other gentlemen and ladies have talked about. It's not necessary. All we're doing is creating an exceptional burden on the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lynette McFarland?
Hold down, it'll come. Thank you. Hi. It's actually Lynell McFarland. I am in the Stonewall District as well. And I am going to focus on some of what has already been discussed, but just in my own way. So when I heard about this, my first thought was, oh my gosh, the current existing roadway infrastructure cannot support the current amount of traffic, and as everyone has noted, specifically the tractor-trailers and the heavy transport trucks that are constantly coming through now. And right now, that's just from Carmus. So currently, along that stretch of Brewstown, you have Carmus. They also have their parcel of land across the way where the James T. Anderson Water Treatment Plant is currently, now I know that's supposed to be moved. So who knows what Carmus will do with that parcel of land. We're also going to be adding up Brewstown Road a little bit. The Frederick Water Intake Facility is supposed to go in. That's on Wood Drive, which is right off of Brewstown Road as well. And now, talk of the Clorox Manufacturing Plant. I want to be clear that I am not against bringing employment opportunities to an area if they need it. I am not against that at all. But in this particular case, yes, the good question is, do we really need it? And if we do, some major changes will have to be absolutely made to the road infrastructure prior to adding anything else so that it is workable. So the two major problems that I see in allowing this to go through, if the road infrastructure is not changed significantly, number one, you're going to have severe and constant damage to the road that will occur, that VDOT will not be able to handle, to maintain. And number two, Clearbrook Fire and Rescue will not be able to get out quickly and efficiently, which to me is a public safety issue. The traffic sometimes backs up past their parking lot, past their way to get out. That's huge to me. So that's about it. Other than, I know, as usual, when pockets are being padded and money is the driving force behind some decisions, you really need to look at the whole picture, the big picture. So, and I think now that the residents are now aware of what's going on, I think you need to look at the whole picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Graber?
Mr. Graber, is this the subject you wanted to speak to?
This is a subject that is not a public, is not subject to a public hearing, so I shouldn't be allowed to present my case.
I'm just asking what the subject was.
It's regard to the Public Safety Committee, and may I ask why I'm being singled out?
No.[1305.65][1305.65][laughing] If you'd like, agenda items only not subject to public hearing.
Yes, sir.
You've just explained it. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. Sean Graber, Beck Creek District. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I would like to speak regarding the Public Safety Committee item that is on the agenda this evening. It is specifically in response to the Proposed Emergency Response Performance Guide. As you may be aware, I have 21 years of fire EMS and emergency management experience and background. I have read this plan, and this plan is not a good plan for the citizens of Frederick County. It is not a good plan for the citizens. It is not a good plan for many of the volunteer fire rescue departments who have purchased apparatus, done fundraisers for buildings, and done many things along the way to get us to where we are today. I see here that it is recommended that it be approved this evening and then brought before the chief's work group for discussion. To me, my friends, that is putting the cart before the horse. I have spoken with several folks in Beck Creek who I know personally from being in fire and EMS for 21 years. They have all said they would like to see this come before the chief's work group, have some input and additional discussion, and then have this fine board vote on this guide and how it moves forward. I would ask each of you to please look at this again, or think about this again, prior to taking a vote on this guide tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ms. Phillips?
We have one more. Kathleen Bakra.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm actually here to speak to the budget proposal that's coming up for Frederick County Public Schools.
We don't have a budget item. We have an advertisement.
Okay. Am I allowed to speak to that?
Why don't you go right ahead?
Okay. My name is Katie Bakert, and I'm a resident of Winchester City and an employee of Frederick County Public Schools. At the Budget Work Session on February 27th, it was mentioned by a supervisor that Frederick County Public Schools does not need Albert Einstein-style people in the classroom, but just a warm body and a pulse. I am proud to say that I am not a mindless, breathing individual that takes up room in a classroom. I've been employed in our schools for 13 years and am very disappointed to hear that a member of the Board of Supervisors would think that any or any of our school employees are. I would challenge any of you to do what I do and hundreds of others do every single day for our children. We teach, we parent, and we guard the community's children every single day. Our children deserve safe transportation and warm and inviting classrooms. Our children deserve the best of what Frederick County school employees can offer them. They will be your future doctors, your future lawyers, your future businessmen and women, and your future taxpayers. I urge those who are for education to continue to fight for our schools, fight for the right to fund our public education system in the county. Do what is correct for Frederick County's future and vote for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, Ms. Phillips?
That is all.
Thank you. All right, bring us to the consent agenda. Would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, I'm sorry, we need a voice.
We'll call.
There is a recall in there. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Consent agenda is adopted. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I'll get it.
I would just like to thank the citizens who have come out this evening to speak to the amendment, and I know most of them are leaving now, but I do, I do think this is the part of the process, and I'm very grateful that you all came out. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Supervisor Dunn?
To the person that just spoke a few minutes ago, if you want to talk to me at the end, I'd be glad to do so. Very briefly, if all the Dr. Albert Einsteins have gone to Loudoun County, I thought there was a significant number of well-qualified people to teach in Frederick County. I'd be glad to chat with you at the end if you'd like. You know who I am. Please give me a call, and I'd be glad to chat with you. Thank you.
Is that the outside alarm, or?
The door.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll get that off here in just a moment. It's quite annoying. We apologize. All right, that'll bring us to committee appointments. Hanley Regional Library Board, just be aware that we're looking for someone. It's the remainder of a four-year term. Extension Leadership Council, Beck Creek. Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I was working with someone, and they have not decided yet whether or not they would like, so I am still looking. If anyone is not arrested, I'd be more than happy to talk with them.
Thank you, sir. Board of Equalization, there's also some additional information that goes along with that job description. It's online, but we're still looking for someone to serve on the Board of Equalization. I'm not going to suggest that it's fun, but it's a very vital portion of what we do, and we certainly appreciate someone stepping up to serve. I think that brings us to the end of committee appointments. Okay, the rest of that page is consent. That'll bring us to item number five under Finance. Supervisor Slaughter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met on February 26th. Items number one through four and item number six were approved on consent agenda, and I would so move.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item number five, the sheriff requested general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $6,692. This amount represents proceeds from the sale of a K-9 cruiser, and the funds will be used to equip, for equipment in the command center. No local funds required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
And let's see, I think we took up the other items at our last meeting with regard to the school resource officer grant and the county, the various codes. So that would conclude my report.
Thank you. All right, so that'll bring us to the proposed tax levies. Who's introducing?
I am.
Mr. Chairman?
Public Safety Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Public Safety Committee, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Public Safety Committee, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I will.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Graber, I think this might already answer your question that you brought up. The proposed Energy Response The Proposed Energy Response Performance Guide, that, it has been presented to the Chief's Work Group, but no consensus was brought, it was just presented. There really was very little discussion. And we'd like to send that, I'm recommending we send that back to the Chief's Work Group, and let them take another look at it. That would be at their April meeting, and then that come back to us, that would be the May meeting.
Back to the Public Safety Committee.
Yes, back to the Public Safety Committee.
Just trying to clarify.
Go back to the Chief's Work Group, then back to Public Safety, and then back to here.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation at this point.
All right, we've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? We'll send that to the Chief's Work Group, and then back to Public Safety. Thank you, sir. All right, that'll bring us to public hearings, non-planning issues. The County Frederick proposes increased property tax levies. Mr. Tierney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As most folks are aware, and I'm sure the Board's aware, we conduct a reassessment of property within the county every two years. The most recent reassessment resulted in a total assessed value of real estate within the county increasing by 5.78%. So, with our existing tax rate, if we were to leave that in place, it results in an effective tax increase to the average property owner. In order to derive the same revenue as last year, we would have to roll that rate back from the current 61 cents to 57.7 cents. So, the Board has advertised to keep the rate at 61 cents, which results in a fact, in an effective tax increase. So this is a public hearing tonight on that tax rate and the effective tax increase that would result from leaving the tax rate at the current 61 cents.
All right, sir.
I know the Commissioner of Revenue is here, if there's detailed questions of some nature, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have questions of the Commissioner? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning these proposed levies? Anyone at all?
Sean Graber, Back Creek District. If I may, to the Board, thank you for allowing me to speak earlier, and to the Chairman, the disrespect shown is shameful, and I'm very saddened to see a citizen treated in the matter in which I was treated. I am here to speak upon the proposed tax increases. My taxes have went up 30.57% over the last four years. This is additional, obviously, 5.78. If you look at the tax increases and where the money has went, not only have we had increases in our budget overall, but we've also had increases in debt. If you look at the debt and outlays that we've had, whether they be schools or whether they be other entities, we have seen ever-expanding costs laid upon us as the citizens. One of those happens to be the interest that we've paid just on school debt. If you would be so kind as to look back into your records, you would see that we paid in excess of $50 million in interest alone over the last four years. $50 million would nearly replace a high school if spent accordingly or properly. It would fully replace a middle school, and it would almost replace two elementary schools. If you're going to raise my taxes 5.78%, and those of my fellow citizens, I would ask that that money be put towards paying down our debt, so that we can have a pay-as-we-go plan moving forward, so that we, the citizens, don't pay twice for our school buildings, for our school buses, or other things that we might choose to finance. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak concerning the new levies? Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Carrie Ann Kite, and I live in the Shawnee District. I spent most of today at the Northern Shenandoah Valley Housing Coalition's Housing Summit. We were talking about workforce housing and ways to make housing more affordable for this community, and there were a lot of different group sessions on ways to solve this, and the one thing that was not mentioned all day was taxes. It's not the taxes that are keeping these people from having affordable housing. I support the effective tax increase, I would like to keep this at the 61 cents. I kind of feel like we need more with the amount of people coming into the community. But going forward, as I said, this isn't about taxes, and if we really want to move forward, and I guess with affordable housing, and how to keep taxes down in terms of reassessments, we do need things like affordable housing, because right now, we have inflated values because of all the development that's coming in with 300-plus thousand home, like houses, and until we can solve this affordable housing and keeping things, I guess, at that lower end, then everything else is going to inflate up, because right now, anything we have that's in the under 200,000 value is getting eaten up, because there just isn't anything there. So, I think if we get more things like affordable housing, it will help with reassessments overall in the county, I guess, maybe neutralizing a little bit of these effective tax rates because of assessments, but thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak concerning the levies? Anyone?
Good evening, I'm Brandy Hammond, a resident of the Shawnee District. I'm here to ask the Board to keep the current real property tax rate of 61 cents in place as advertised. We continue to have unfunded needs countywide, including funds that are, needs that are unmet for our schools, our fire and rescue department, as well as our sheriff's department, things that I, that I think need lots of funding. We kind of need to play catch-up and plan for the future funding needs. So at an absolute minimum, the county really needs the additional revenue generated from the increased assessments, and even with that, it still won't meet all our needs. We cannot afford to lower the tax rate, and I strongly urge the Board to consider increasing the tax rate next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak concerning the levies? Anyone? Last call? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion of the discussion. Ready to move on? We'll bring us to item number B, Extension to Cable Franchise Agreement with Comcast. Three months, I believe it is.
Mr. Chairman, as the Board may be aware, we currently have a franchise agreement with Comcast. That agreement's been in place for nearly 10 years. It's due to expire. We have county staff, including from the Attorney's Office, that have been negotiating with Comcast to renew that agreement. Comcast has requested a three-month extension, so they can get various things in place to bring revised and renewal of the franchise agreement forward. So that's really what's before you tonight, is the request to extend the existing agreement by a period of three months. I can try and answer any questions, and Mr. Scott Varner, IT Director, who's a little more in-depth in his knowledge of the details of this, is also here if we need his help.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Varner, or Mr. Tierney? Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Tierney, and I believe it will be to Mr. Tibbs. I just want to confirm, because I've gotten information, that this is a non-exclusive contract, that other organizations such as Chantel or Verizon have the opportunity to come into the county, they simply have to make an application and make a request. And if we vote to do this, even for another 10 years or whatever, that it does not prohibit another company from coming in and providing service to Frederick County constituents. Is that correct?
That's true. Mr. Dunn, yes?
And always has been.
And I just want to pad that.
There's a lot of misinformation out there.
We're just trying to clear up that misinformation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, how would the Board like to handle the request, or are there any other questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to extend the cable franchise agreement.
It is a public hearing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I don't know.
This is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak concerning this proposed extension? Anyone at all? Anyone? Last call? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and I apologize.
My apologies also.
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I will get it. Move for approval of the extension of the cable franchise agreement with Comcast of California, Maryland, Pennsylvania, Virginia, West Virginia LLC.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Extension is granted. That will bring us to the public hearing of the 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you stated, this is the public hearing for the 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Plan. The CIP is a document that consists of a schedule of major capital expenditures for the county for the ensuing five-year period, as well as a category for long-term projects which are six-plus years out. Now, I would note that the inclusion of projects on the CIP is no way an indication that Frederick County will be undertaking these projects. It's strictly an advisory document intended for use as a capital facilities planning document, not for requesting funding allocation. Once adopted, project priorities and cost estimates may change throughout the year based on changing circumstances, and I would also note it's possible for a particular project to not be funded during the cycle year as indicated on the CIP. Now, this year's CIP continues to reinforce the connections between the CIP, the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and future rezoning applications the county may receive. It consists of a total of 81 projects. These are from schools, parks and recreation, the library, county administration, fire and rescue, sheriff's office, transportation, and the airport. Now, those various agencies are broken down into three separate tables. Your Table 1, which is your general government expenditures. Table 2, I'm sorry, Table 1 is schools, parks, library, administration, fire and rescue, sheriff. Table 2 is transportation, Table 3 is airport. I would note that those are broken up by typical funding sources, such as local, state, or federal. So your Table 1 are typically the one you would see local allocations. And these are just excerpts from the tables included in your agenda, I'm not going to go through them. There's also maps that correspond to the tables and the projects. Your first map is your general government request, you have schools, parks and recreation, transportation. Now, just a history of where this document has been, it first went to Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee back at their December 2018 meeting, and they did endorse the CIP and stated it wasn't conformist with the Comprehensive Plan. It then went to the Planning Commission at their January meeting, and they also endorsed the CIP. It was presented to this Board at your February 13th meeting and was sent forward to public hearing. So tonight, we are seeking a decision from the Board on the adoption of the CIP. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Perkins, anyone? Anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, how would the Board like to handle the CIP?
Public hearing.
Public hearing? So, public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning the proposed 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Plan? Thank you, Sheriff, we could have your name, yes, please. Your name, Magisterial District, please, sir.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Stephen Bauer, I'm from Back Creek District, and I'm here to voice my support for the Capital Improvement Plan, mainly for the planned indoor aquatic center. I'm a parent of a year-round swimmer and a high school swimmer with Coach Joe Knight from Sherrando High School, and mostly, yeah, from a personal reason, because my son's a swimmer, and it'd be nice to have a nice indoor aquatic center, but also from a financial standpoint. If you've ever been to the Wharf at Warrington, it's a beautiful facility, they host probably 15, 20 meets a year that bring in hundreds, if not thousands, of swimmers from across the country sometimes, and it's a huge boon economically. People go to restaurants, they have to stay in hotels if they're there for the entire weekend, and having a facility similar to that in this area would be a huge economic boon to this area, and I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to comment concerning the proposed CIP?
Mr. Sean Graber, Back Creek District. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to present before the Board here. A couple of thoughts and opinions. The first, if you will look at your Capital Improvement Plan, I've printed out a copy of it here with me, if you look at the Table 2 at the bottom, totals, the totals for the Capital Improvement Plan for years 1 through 6 come up to $1.5 billion with a B. If we look at our budget, and we look at our tax revenue, and we look at our needs in fire rescue, we look at our needs with the sheriff's office, we look at our needs with the fine schools that we need to build and need to improve, we can have a discussion on whether the maintenance has been taken care of or not, it all boils down to, do we have the money to finance this? And in my opinion, the answer is no. I think we need to go back and come up with a Capital Improvement Plan that's a little bit more realistic to what we can afford financially before we ever consider the plan that has been presented. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to comment concerning the proposed Capital Improvements Plan? Anyone at all?
Brandy Hammond for Shawnee District, I appreciate you taking the time to put together the Capital Improvement Plan for the county, I think it gives a clear picture of all the needs in the county, and will help us go ahead and plan for those needs we currently have, as well, as well as the future, and, you know, when I bought my house, I wasn't able to save up enough money to buy it and pay cash. I think most of us are not in that situation, so as with, you know, pretty much every municipality, you do take on debt to plan for your future, so, so please just keep that in mind as you're planning as well. And please don't wait to save up for our schools to build them, because it's far too late at that point. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone at all? Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe Knight, I'm a resident of the Peckham District. Over the last 15 years, I've been the head varsity swim coach at Sherrando High School, as well as an educator at Sherrando High School. I've reviewed the Parks and Recreation Project Priority List prior to tonight's meeting, and I'm here to speak to you tonight in favor of both. Item number, item number two on their priority list, calling for a 44,000 square foot community center. And then again, item number four, which Mr. Bauer, Dr. Bauer spoke about earlier, priority number four, the indoor aquatic center. I'd just like to point out to the body here tonight that there's really nothing luxurious about teaching our children with Frederick County to swim, when hundreds of students drown each year for a lack of that ability. It's not a luxury to offer a lifetime form of exercise in the midst of the national obesity crisis. It's also important to offer our local swim teams the same kind of support that you provide for football, basketball, soccer players, and especially when swimming affords equal opportunity for boys and girls and students with special needs. Aquatic facility would be a classroom, a level playing field, and an asset for the entire community. Drowning, ladies and gentlemen, is the second-leading cause of death of children under the age of 14, and we can prevent that. Currently, there are two facilities that serve the needs of our local high schools and two USA-sanctioned swimming teams in the community. One of them practices, one of them is the facility here in Winchester, the Jim Burnett Facility, and the second is the Signal Knob Facility in Strasburg. As a high school coach, we share the Jim Burnett Facility with three other of the local high schools and one USA-sanctioned swim team. Our practice schedules are difficult, if not almost impossible, and I want you to be aware of what our swimming community is actually going through. Currently, swimmers participating at the high school level practice at 5:30 in the morning, then they change, and then they make it to school on time. Sherrando High School, our school in particular, we practice from 6:30 to 7:15, and then we make it to school on time. However, we only, and that's two days a week, and then we don't even have a practice time. top eight in the Virginia High School League Swimming Championships. I would just ask you to imagine what we might be able to provide and accomplish if we had a proper facility and proper training times. The few facts and fictions here that I have, if approved and constructed, the community center and also the aquatic center would serve not only the students and swim teams of the local high school, but they would also provide Frederick County and community-based services, opportunities to provide swim and safety classes for all ages, lifeguard and rescue trainees, physical therapy students in career and technical education programs, as well as recreational swimmers and exercise seekers of all ages. Across not only Frederick County, I guarantee you, we would draw a huge population from Clark County and Shenandoah County as well, not to mention to provide an area and access for students with disabilities, seeking additional opportunities to compete in athletic competition.
Sir, we appreciate your comments. You need to conclude.
All right. In conclusion, then, sir, I would just like to mention that I sat in this room about five years ago, and the issue of a aquatic center was brought before the board, and unfortunately it was tabled at that point in time, and I note in interest that the issue of not only the recreation facility, but also the aquatic center was a result of a survey that was produced by Frederick County Parks and Rec in 2017. Ladies and gentlemen, here we are in the year 2019, and we still don't have any action on these programs. I would urge your consideration to approve and move forward with both of these projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to comment? Anyone?
I'd like to speak to the swimming issue. I don't know if many of you remember, Apple Pie Ridge used to have an indoor pool, and elementary school students learned to swim in that pool from all the elementary schools. And a pool is hard to upkeep, but this is something that's been needed for over 20 years, and it will bring in people to spend the night in the hotels and to eat at the restaurants, because I've been to Big Meets in Richmond and to Idle Lead in Leesburg and the Quantico base, and it does bring in people. So, it is very worthwhile, and it's been needed a long time. And when I went to James Madison University, everyone who graduated had to learn to swim. So, it is worthwhile, and it's a lifelong activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak on the proposed CIP? Anyone? Last call? All right. Puts a public hearing portion of the discussion. How would the board like to handle this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would move for the adoption of the CIP.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Supervisor Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the CIP, but to Mr. Graber's remarks, I think they're well-taken, that this is a wish list, maybe not a need list, and I think it's going to be incumbent upon this board and other boards to take a look at what the county should provide and what the private sector can provide, and make sure that we're not at odds at that point. So, again, it's a wish list. We obviously cannot afford to build everything on this list, and it's going to be up to the boards to decide at which point each project is initiated.
Other comments? Anyone? Supervisor Dunn?
I'll just reiterate what I've said, I'll reiterate what I've said before. This kind of continues to grow. The county grew about 45,000 people in the last century. It's grown 40,000 people in the last 28 years. It's grown 27,000 people since 2000, and I think that we need to have changes on our proper laws. We have to have changes on impacts that the capital costs are borne by those moving into the capital, those into the county, and that's the way you're going to address some of these issues. Those that are interested in working on it, you know, talk to me afterwards. Thank you.
Heard there's discussion? Anyone? Are we ready? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Capital improvements Plan is adopted as presented. Bring us to item number eight under Planning Business, rezoning 0318, Carpers Valley Industrial Park. Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As noted, this is, Carpers Valley Industrial Park is a request to rezone, a total of 122.18 acres from the R4 Residential Plan Community District with proffers to the M1 Light Industrial District with proffers. Is that better? Sorry. This subject property is part of the original's Carpers Valley Governor's Hill rezoning, which was first approved in 2005, with subsequent revisions in 2009, 2013, and 2014. The original rezoning, 1105, provided for 143 total acres of commercial uses and 550 residential units on six total parcels of land. The Land Bay One was the residential, and the Land Bay Two, which is primarily, which is the lion's share, what we're talking about tonight, is the commercial. This was postponed from your January 23rd meeting to allow time for the applicant to attempt coordination with the surrounding property owners. Since that January 23rd meeting, the applicant has added two new proffers. The first of those is the installation of a screen buffer along the Northern Property Line along Route 50 in response to comments from neighbors on the other side of Route 50, and the second is to add 360,000 in cash proffers to the county to be used to pay toward the road improvements in the public right-of-way on Route 50 to create an intersection, a potential intersection with Inverly Leeway, or to be used at the county's discretion for road improvements in the Coverstone Drive area. Now, this evening, a revision to that second one was passed out, which I will be allowing the applicant to speak to.
We have it.
So, you have that. That does modify the specificity in terms of being directly attributable to Route 50 as opposed to related to those rights-of-way directly impacted by this development. Now, if you take a look, the screen to your left, we do have the subject parcels outlined on the map. Of course, you have Route 50 through the upper right-hand quadrant of your map. We're not going to go into great details we did in the first presentation. Of course, we can answer any questions you may have that relate back to that as well. However, to reiterate the previously identified concerns, continues to not be in conformance with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. There is no coordination, as we are aware of anyway, from a staff perspective with Land Bay Two. It remains unclear if the industrial development will continue to offset the impacts of the residential development, should that not rezone or something else happen with that property. This does eliminate the design modification package on this parcel that is for rezoning in terms of tying back to other transportation proffers that were in coordination with the other development, the other portions of the development. Specific to transportation concerns, as we noted at your last meeting, considering this, we do still have concerns regarding the implementation of the Comprehensive Plan Road Network, the coordination once again with neighboring properties, the increase in truck generation, which you will see, although I will continue to note that you're dealing with many fewer automobile trips, but more trucks is more trucks, and that's always a concern. And finally, as we noted previously, the analysis of right-of-way needs for the off-site improvements that are proffered and the inadequacy of the turn lane improvements on Route 52, which were applied for under smart scale and at least at this early stage of the smart scale process, appear to be, that appears to be an unsuccessful application. However, we'd refer you back to that in terms of what the real turn lane needs are in that area. With that, I can take any questions you may have regarding the transportation. Of course, Mrs. Perkins is here as well for more land use-related items, and Mr. Lawson is here representing the applicant.
Thanks, sir. Questions for staff? Anyone? Anyone? Thank you, sir. Mr. Lawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ty Lawson here on behalf of the applicant. As Mr. Bishop correctly pointed out, we have come back with two revised proffers. One is 2.2, which is to install a screen buffer along the Northern Property Line, which is along Route 50, and this was in direct comment. A couple of folks, I believe, from the neighborhood across Route 50 had raised that as an issue, and so we went ahead and addressed that. We also did revise and actually create a 7.9, which is to pay the $360,000 to the county to be used to be paid towards road improvements, and it was, use the word intentionally, to be paid to the county to be used at the county's discretion. We've also been in continuous discussions with various folks, and for the record, I'd like to read a slightly modified 7.9, which, and I'll state for the record, has the approval of the sellers, which is most important. Their counsel is also here, and also Penonian Associates is here, which possesses the power of attorney for the sellers, and authorized me to say the following. To make it crystal clear and to make it certain that the money that would be paid would be used at the county's discretion, it'll read as follows. The owner shall pay $360,000 to the county to be used to pay toward road improvements related to those right-of-ways directly impacted by this development. And this is to be put in in the section where it talks about how the money is paid, and it's intended to replace the limit, to the extent it was read into it, that there was a limitation in 7.9 of improvements in the Coverstone Drive area. So, what this is intended to do is to not only give the county discretion to use those funds when the funds are paid, per the proffer, in the Coverstone Drive area, but also, as you'll remember from our original proffer, which still stands, we are proffering to do improvements to other intersections as you go out to Route 50 and as you go out to 522. So, those would certainly be areas that are impacted by this development. The only other thing we would add is that there was a comment in the staff report about Y360, $360,000, and where that came from was an analysis, because we're already proffering to build Coverstone across the length of our property. There was some discussion about what would be costs of doing work on the other side of Coverstone, but within property that is owned by the county, which is already in the right-of-way, and we actually engaged a contractor, road contractor, to look at the existing design of what is to be in the, built in the intersection with Inverly, Coverstone, and Route 50. And please keep in mind, it's a drawing that shows and accommodates a significant amount of trips. Mr. Bishop properly pointed out that what we are proffering is much less trips than what that commercial shopping center would have generated, which was in excess of 45,000 trips per day. So, this design that was bid, if you will, or quoted, actually has two double Ls and lengthy D cell lanes and so on, but regardless, we went ahead and had that quoted. It actually came up to 353,000 and change with the seller's permission. We're just rounding that up to 360,000. So, to the extent there's any question about why that number, that's where that came from. We're here, Penoni is here, I'm here, to answer any questions, and I'm not sure if the public hearing's reopened or not, but be pleased to be able to respond to any comments. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Lawson? Anyone? Anyone? All right. Questions of staff? Anyone? Shawnee District.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McCarthy is actually going to make a motion.
Mr. McCarthy.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the rezoning subject to the amended proffers as stated by Mr. Lawson.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
No.
Supervisor Wells.
Oh.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Nay.
Sorry?
Nay.
No? Supervisor Trout.
No.
Chair votes no. Motion fails. All right. Liaison reports, are there any? Hearing none. Citizen comments on any issue that they might like to share with the board? Come forward, Mr. Graber.
Sean Graber, Back Creek District.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address your
chairman to have, and thank you for allowing me to come forward. I'd like to personally thank Mr. Wells for the record for bringing the fire rescue guideline back to the committee, to the chiefs to discuss, and the reason I say that is, yes, it was brought before the chiefs, as you mentioned, and I'm well aware of that, and I appreciate you making that brought forward. The important thing was, is many of the individuals who I know personally from my 21 years of fire and EMS experience have felt that the current plan was, for more or less better terms, jammed down their throats. Many of these fine folks have put many, many hours or years of dedicated service to us, the citizens of Frederick County, and I appreciate very much the opportunity for these folks to have a little bit of input into how they are managed, not only them, but the monies that they are given and we give is managed going forward. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Opportunity to share anything at all? Anyone? Last chance? Thank you. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any? Anyone?
I have a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the CIP, we had a discussion and a couple of comments about it being a wish list, and I would just like to say that although the CIP does have a lot of things on there that are kind of lofty goals, there are many things on there that I would put in the needs category that we are going to have to face, that we need to fund those, or else we're just going to have a, our community is going to disintegrate, basically, because we're not going to be able to keep up with the people moving in. So, although it is a wish list, I do think that we need to seriously consider many of the things that are listed at the top of each, in each category as priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ones? Anyone? Mr. Chairman Lofton.
Chairman, I move we adjourn.
I should adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. We'll stand adjourned. We certainly thank everyone for their time and attention.